I'm asking the council board to please, let's make a decision today concerning the answer with Antonio Vargas. We're supposed to be the mayor. I'm against having two mayors, which is for Los Angeles County and now another mayor for Los Angeles. Because Antonio Vargas is not doing a great job in decision. He's averaging a D. And now he is in trouble, which is dealing with taxes, which is dealing with fraud, and now we need assistance for him. He has been all over the world dealing with mayors. So council board, making your decision, please be cautious. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Our next speaker is Bruce Darian out in Van Nuys. Mr. Darian, welcome.
Good morning, City Council. It's been a few weeks since I've spoke here. A couple of weekends ago, I was listening on 11:50 AM air talk radio. Robert F. Kennedy Jr. was on and was hosting the show with Bob Woodward, who is the editor of the Washington Post. And Robert Kennedy Jr. was asking Woodward why the public was failed in being apprised as to what went on with the Iraq War in the early stages when the government had information was, and their memos were going back and forth as to what was truly going on and needed to be done and what was being conveyed to the public. This is exact situation we have here with the pier situation, the Malibu Pier, the construction with it, the fraud, environmental crimes going to, from Malibu Canyon into Los Angeles River, the destruction of our federal coastal wetlands that involve all Americans. And I'd like the public to really take note of the fact that there's been more than 300 lawyers that have worked on this with 50 law firms in seven years of litigation. The press has failed the people in investigating what's gone on in the public contracting fraud. It's replete with fraud and the public should be well aware of it and start taking action with public lawmakers. I've spoke many times here. The city has been, has failed to take action on this. And also, I'd appreciate if the people behind me would convey some respect here. It's been 65 years ago when our country was called on to defend the world from tyranny, from Hitler, and it, when Pearl Harbor happened. And it's time that we take account of the tyranny that's here in this country and that's controlling our democracy. Because what's going on isn't right. Thank you, and if I don't speak again, Merry Christmas to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian. Our next speaker is Oscar Johnson, here in council chambers.
My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm active for the homeless, and I see the homeless on Skid Row are very neglected. And I think the city is getting too much of fun for the homeless. They don't have nothing positive in their life, and the streets are very nasty and dirty, need to be cleaned and repaired. And they also have rat-infested hotels down on Skid Row, and you have children living in dangerous hotels. You have a law against children living in hotels. The Ford Hotel and that Alexander Hotel is rat-infested hotel, and they should be clean or else condemned. And whoever the city councilman is down there should be held more responsible for what her duty towards the citizen that she, that elected her, elected them. And the fire department down, and the fire, and the City of Los Angeles Fire Department, they're very much out of line, and they just use their fire trucks in a needless, in a reckless way, and they endanger the lives of innocent citizens with their pranking in the fire trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our next speaker is Candido Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Newspaper today, two items that I really like. One is competitive edge, and the other one's about volunteerism. It went after Mr. Alicon. It said Alicon strikes below at democracy in the City of Los Angeles, that he's making a mockery of the system. He's not making a mockery of the system. The system is what it is. I'm just a little disappointed at the fact that two individuals that I felt that were promising candidates dropped out, but I guess it's not the size of the dog in the fight. It's about the fight and the dog in that fight. So I'm a little disappointed that they dropped out, but, you know, in the sixth district, we have a lot of candidates that have no money and no name recognition. But we're going to make it a spirited debate, and the sixth district's going to be a better place for it afterwards. Isn't that right, Mr. Cardinals? We're going to work hard together to make sure this sixth district becomes the best district in City of Los Angeles.
Hold on one second. Hold on. I'm recognizing you, Mr. Weiss. Go ahead.
I think it is inappropriate for folks to use city microphones for political purposes, and I would ask that that rule be strictly enforced.
We've actually had an opinion on this. I'd like, if you can just pause for a second, we'll pause your time. Mr. City Attorney, this is something we've inquired about, and we are limited around this horseshoe. Unfortunately, the restriction on the other end is somewhat different, but I would ask folks to address the council in general as a reminder. And, Mr. City Attorney, if you would please detail for the council, members of the public and our viewers what that policy is.
Yes, briefly, a member of the public can discuss political matters. The implicit commentary is dissatisfaction with council's performance, and city council cannot be against what the speaker's speaking about regarding, they cannot be disagreeing with what the speaker's speaking about if the speaker is disagreeing with the city's performance. So implicitly, these political commentaries are a disagreement with the way the city is operating.
We also, I believe you gave an opinion before about the use of city resources, though, for political campaigns. That was more germane to what Mr. Weiss, I think, was asking.
Yes, that's correct. The city council members cannot be campaigning because public resources via Channel 35 broadcast would be used for city council members to make their comments.
Do I have my time?
Please continue, yes.
Mr. President, Councilman, Mr. Weiss, I wasn't talking about, I was talking about cooperation between-
Please address the council.
Between the councilman and the discussions that we're going to be having in the sixth district to make it a better, a better district. And the councilman, and if he wins, he's going to be a better councilman for that. So I'm talking about competition. It's sad that in the seventh district, nobody was willing to stand up. It doesn't, it isn't about money. It isn't about name recognition. It's about commitment and where you want your district to be within seven years. One of the things that we in the Van Nuys area, the Knights of Columbus, volunteerism. We've been there for, since 1948, and the councilman made a promise to fix the big lump in front of our entry, and we're looking forward to the councilman taking care of that issue. But again, Mr. President, council members, Mr. Alicon did make a mockery of the system. I was here in 1993 when he was here. I was here when he left, and I will be here next year when he arrives. So again, that's democracy at its best. People that want to fight and go out and fight, get a chance. If you don't, stay home. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. We'll go back out to the valley. Matt Dowd is our next speaker out in the valley.
Hey, thank you very much, City Council. Nice to be out in the private chambers of Zuma Dog. He's invited me out here. Thought I'd come in and announce the title fight. Rocky 10. Right, you've seen, we've got our own version of Rocky going on. There's our entry to the fight, okay? It's called Rocky 10 because there's been a history with our particular Rocky. See, Rocky 1 and 2, that was when he got elected to city attorney, and then he got re-elected unopposed. Wow, great victories. But Rocky 3, that's the one I remember. He lost to Carol Sobel last year on the Venice Ordinance. Then we brought out Rocky 4, the $3 million campaign for state attorney general. He lost that one to Jerry Brown. Then there was Rocky 5. That was a great story when he lied about his pro football. He played football at Harvard, whatever the LA Times covered that story.
Sir, for general public comment, if you could make sure you address things that are under our jurisdiction. Thank you.
The mayor asked them to take out injunctions against the EAA so that essential services wouldn't go on strike. But guess what? Rocky didn't deliver the injunction notice, and so they couldn't sue the people who didn't show up to work. Rocky 7, he came into chambers. Proper. Boy, the judge is still out on that fight. There's some dirty tricks going on. We don't really know. Rocky 8, he lost another federal court challenge. Carol Sobel arresting the homeless people for being homeless in downtown. Rocky 9, the independent attorney came in from council to look over his shoulder right now. He starts up next month, I hear. And now, Rocky 10, January 8, the Roy Ball Building of all places. What a lovely name. Michael Hunt, Et L Rocky. It's Rocky 10. It's coming soon. It's called the preliminary injunction. We can't wait. It's going to be one hell of a show.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Michael Hunt.
City Council, you guys just heard it all. Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles. I guess this is going to be a big one. We told you guys, we brought it to you guys. I think that you seen the fight in the paper between Rocky and the mayor. One couldn't pass the bar. One bought the bar test. So we know how we feel about that. The council called for an independent council on three or more items that Rocky's intervened in. We just want our civil rights and our First Amendment rights returned back to us as individuals and as human beings. And the LA Times, you know, so this is me. This is what America looks like. This is how we do it, you guys. But first and foremost is our First Amendment rights have been violated not only by city council, but by the city attorney as well. You guys try to cover that up. It's been uncovered in 97 when the City of Los Angeles was charged in the Harry Perry case. Then they was charged in 2005 with the Carol Sobel case. Now they're going to be charged in 2007 again with the Hunt versus Rocky Del Gil case. And what's going to happen to you guys is you guys are going to all have a civil rights violation on your tag. So we tried to tell you guys that, you know, we didn't come down here to play. We come down here to work.
Thank you very much.
The show, the show has, the show has to go on, and it has to be proven that our civil rights violation has been violated and that we've been violated up under the Brown Act and up under the First Amendment and our civil rights. So watch it. Our 750,000 viewers, we will have a verdict for you on the 8th. Let's get them up.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our public comment period. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item 30 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Why don't we go ahead and do the public hearing first? I think there hasn't been a public hearing on this, right, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, there hasn't been a public hearing on this?
Public hearing has not been held on this.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead with public hearing first?
All right, that's fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Our first speaker on this item will be Amanda Susskind.
Good morning, President Garcetti and members of the council. I'm Amanda Susskind. I'm the regional director of the, thank you, of the Anti-Defamation League here in Los Angeles. The Anti-Defamation League is a 93-year-old Jewish civil rights agency whose mission is to combat antisemitism and bigotry of all kinds. We have a long history of standing up for immigrant rights. We do this because it's the right thing to do. We do this because we were once strangers in this land, too. We do this because we can. Today, we are not simply representing the Jewish community. We stand before you with 17 partners, including the ACLU, the Los Angeles Archdiocese, and organizations representing Asian Pacific, Latino, gay and lesbian, Korean, and South Asian communities. The ADL and our partners stand before you representing immigrants from all corners of the world, political refugees, economic refugees, people who, like all of our forefathers, came here seeking a better life. We stand before you because two years ago, an Anti-Defamation League report found astonishing cases of human rights abuses at our U.S.-Mexico border. And over the past several years, we have monitored and seen firsthand a growing tide of hatred and racism infusing the debate on immigration reform. Simply, the extremists are taking over the debate. We have seen vigilante civilian border patrols form at our borders. We have seen neo-Nazis and white supremacist groups infiltrate protests and mainstream debates. We have seen elected leaders targeted with death threats simply because they're Latino. It's not okay. We bring to you today our Declaration of Los Angeles. Our declaration does not take a partisan or political position on any specific legislation. Our declaration does not propose a solution. Can I have another minute? To our immigration debate, our declaration is simple. We believe that human rights have a place at the table. We believe that xenophobia and racism have no place at the table. We bring this declaration to you today not for legislative or executive action. We bring it to you to keep in mind as you ponder the issues before you that affect the immigrant community, a community that makes up such a vital part of this thriving metropolis. From here, we take the declaration to the state legislature and onto the halls of Congress. And we're doing this in other states around the country, especially border states where ADL regions exist. But they're waiting for us to go first, for Los Angeles to take the lead. We, and you, stand poised to lead the world by example, to make it mean something that this is the Declaration of Los Angeles. The Anti-Defamation League and our 17 partners ask you to embrace our message. Remember it when you deliberate. Remember it when you judge. The world is watching.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Council General Ruben Beltran.
Thank you very much. This morning, I come here and appear before you to express my gratitude to the Anti-Defamation League and to Amanda Susskind and the other 18 organizations that have endorsed, pre-crafted and endorsed this Los Angeles declaration. So thank you to all of you. I want to thank the city council, President Garcetti, and all of you for considering this resolution this morning. Mexico recognizes the right of any nation to craft and give to itself its own legislation on immigration. While doing so, we consider that by enforcing that legislation, there's a paramount right, a paramount consideration to be given to the rights of the immigrants, the human rights of the immigrants. So the mere fact that the city council is considering this declaration today gives me a lot of pride to be here in Los Angeles. Los Angeles, once again, is about to take the leadership in the nation by considering this resolution. So I applaud you. I thank you for considering this resolution, and I applaud you and commend ADL and all the organizations that took the leadership on this. I'm very proud to stand before you today, and my heart is full of recognition and gratitude. And since I'm not going to be able to maybe to address the city council in the days to come, I want to wish all of you happy festivities, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Council General. Our next speaker will be Hamid Khan, followed by Grace Yu.
Good morning, council members. My name is Hamid Khan. I'm the executive director of South Asian Network and an organizer with the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. South Asian Network is a grassroots, community-based organization working with over half a million South Asian immigrants in Los Angeles. Immigrants have become a dirty word in our popular imagination. When David Duke ran for the election many years ago, he used the guise of reverse discrimination, forming the national advancement of white people, and sent a message out to the mainstream community that their rights are being violated. But underlying that message was hatred. Similarly, what we have seen over the last three or four years, that the language of national security has been weaved with hatred and sending out messages to our communities that the immigrant is a demon. Recently, I was talking to a friend of mine who has a carpet-laying business, and he said that he was told point-blank that don't send any Mexicans to our house to lay the carpet. So the imagination, the attitude, and the responses, and the reactions in our communities, and the way the communities are being targeted, whether it's an Indian woman who cannot wear a sari because there's a dot buster out there who's going to pick up a baseball bat and beat her up, whether it's a taxi driver who cannot share his national origin or his faith because he's going to be beaten up, the stories are numerous. But we stand here in solidarity and thank you very much for taking this action and showing that Los Angeles continues to be a leader and really take a serious action about this issue of racism and exploitation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Grace Yu is our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Grace Yu. I'm the executive director of the Korean-American Coalition, which has been in existence now for 23 years. We've been proud to represent the Korean-American community, understanding that as an immigrant community, we've been instrumental in bringing about a great economic boom to this city along with the rest of the other nationalities and immigrants who've come to this wonderful city that makes Los Angeles what it is. We understand, along with our sister organizations on this declaration, with ADL taking the lead, how important it is that we treat everybody with dignity, because everybody needs to be treated fairly and equally regardless of status. The democratic process cannot continue if we let extremists get their way. And we know that this wonderful city council can take the lead and show students, elderly, everyone who matters within this city and this community how important it is to treat everybody with respect. And I appreciate the fact that I have your attention. And it's wonderful to note that you, as members of the Los Angeles City Council, support the fair and equitable treatment of all people. And I'm so delighted that I am a citizen of Los Angeles and that I have been a product of the LA Unified School Districts. I'm saddened to see that some things have not changed, including discrimination, but I hope that we can work together to change that. And we thank you once again for supporting this declaration.
Our next speaker will be Matt Dowd, followed by Michael Hunt.
Yeah, thank you very much. One of my, thank you very much, one of my favorite items, this one. I'm all in favor of it. I want to welcome the Mexican Council General. You know, I'm on your side with this one. We need to monitor the vigilantes. You know, we can't be a completely lawless society. We can't have people running around handing out justice willy-nilly on the border. And the other part of this, this motion is a resolution about the humane treatment. What that means is that the due process of the law should be served and people are protected, especially for immigrants who fear for their, for their safety. This is a great item. This is about protection for people's rights, basically, without prejudice. So we need to keep up this monitoring of the border patrol, sorry, the vigilantes. There is a process. The federal government is trying to deal with it, and we need to support them on that. And I'm all in favor of humane, dignified treatment of anybody who has set foot in the United States of America. Thank you.
Michael Hunt.
City Council, I too am in agreement with this. Violating people's civil rights because they're immigrants, I disagree. I am strongly in favor of an independent council watching law enforcement so these kind of acts won't happen. It is so important that our civil rights and our First Amendment rights be protected, and it is so very true. That's what African-Americans fought for, too, in the early '60s, in the '50s, in the '40s. So I feel you guys. I understand. I'm one of you guys. I live in your world every day. I'm harassed. I'm, my rights are violated, whether they're on the border or not. It still doesn't make a difference. Our rights need to be protected. First and foremost, we need to make sure that we have independent councils watching law enforcement so these kind of things will not happen. We need to take extra, extra measures on the border as well. We need to get the racism, the white supremacists, all the other groups out of it. And we need to take over and make sure that it's done properly in a proper fashion. I too know what it feels like to have my civil rights violated. I too understand how law enforcement treats you. I too understand what it is to be like an African-American in America and our civil rights still be violated. So I feel you guys. Keep up the good cause. Congratulations to everybody that's fighting this. Big ups to you guys. You guys, you guys will prevail, just like Hunt versus City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Amanda. The Anti-Defamation League, thank you so much. Council General Ruben Beltran, who's been a great friend to these chambers and this city throughout his service, and to the wide coalition. The folks that look at this declaration and you see the coalition, it's really the A-team of Los Angeles. It is the best and the brightest organizations and individuals who have a very simple but very powerful message here today, that we can be the beginning of the chorus. It starts with one voice. This is something that will spread to other cities and other parts, but whenever we hear untruths, we have to speak the truth that much louder. Whenever we hear the voices of hatred and exclusion, we have to make sure that we are present to reiterate values that sometimes we take for granted, but that we know that Los Angeles is founded on and predicated on, that of inclusion, that of diversity, the most probably diverse collection of human beings since the beginning of humanity is here in Los Angeles. Over 24 countries that find their biggest population of people from those countries outside those countries here in Los Angeles. Over 140 languages spoken on our streets. But there are some voices that don't add to that beauty, some voices that don't add to that diversity. They certainly have the right to say whatever they want, but we have the right to show how much bigger and stronger and more powerful we are. And that's what this declaration is about. Without negating the need for safe and secure borders, without wading into some of the partisan politics that divide people on immigration, this has a very simple, universal message, that the human rights and dignity of all Angelenos and all human beings must be upheld, and that Los Angeles's strength comes from not only recognizing that, but celebrating that and fostering it. The Anti-Defamation League, I've been proud to work with for over 15 years, from when I was a college activist, bringing that message. And they have always, starting as a Jewish organization, brought in the entire community, whether it be on racial lines, sexual orientation lines, gender lines, to say that hatred is hatred is hatred, and discrimination against one person is discrimination against everybody. And I want to thank Councilmember Weiss, who joined me on this, to be a voice today to say that Los Angeles will stand very firm. And we can hear those voices that for a moment we mistake for being larger than they are because they are often loud and they are often extreme, but we know what the true majority of Los Angeles feels. We know who we are, and we know the mission that we want to see here, a city that will continue to grow because of that strength of diversity and that strength of the culture that is here. So I ask your support here today, colleagues. And we often do declarations and things that seem like they're easy. Who's opposed to this? What impact does it have? Trust me, the voices that hear this are the ones that become the loudest and the strongest, and in the end of the day, are the ones that represent our city. When we remain silent, we let that vacuum and that void be filled by people who are not us and don't represent us. So today, we stand very proudly and we stand very strongly for this Declaration of Los Angeles that will become a declaration throughout this land, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Drew.
Did you say me? Who did you say? Who did you say? I'm sorry, I couldn't, oh, me. Okay, thank you. Couldn't hear who she was calling. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Eric, and all the people who are here today, the coalition of organizations that are represented to stand up for the Declaration of Los Angeles, and the fact that you're going to take this around the state and to the federal government, the importance of us, as you say, monitoring the extremists and those who would take away the rights of others, I think is extremely important. And Los Angeles has always been a beacon of light to stand up on issues of importance and national significance, as has the ADL and the many other organizations represented here today. So we appreciate you taking that leadership role to bring this to us and the concept. And ADL recently has had so many, I think, accomplishments and dinners and events celebrating people who stand up for others' civil rights. And just wanted to stand up and say thank you, and thank you, Eric, for your leadership and our ability to shine a light on an issue that is critically important to the residents of Los Angeles, but more importantly to the world, what we are going to do here in Los Angeles. So congratulations and thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Mr. Huesar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our president for bringing this, Mr. Weiss, and certainly the ADL, and Amanda, who I've known for some time. It's great to see our General Counsel of Mexico here, uh, talking so openly about this issue that affects us all. It affects us all because no matter where you are in this debate, whether you're even a vigilante, you're in danger. If you take the law into your own hands, you're in danger to yourself, to the people you may be holding hostage, and to the Border Patrol. We in L.A. would not want or tolerate any vigilantism here. I'm sure if someone attempted to take the law into their own hands here, we would automatically and so swiftly and strongly stand up and protect and defend our LAPD from anything that would bring up vigilantism here in Los Angeles. The same thing is happening in our borders. And that's why it's so important that we not only support this, to show that this is a danger, it could cause chaos, and we will not tolerate this. But more importantly, on the humanitarian level, we know that no matter who you are, where you come from, you deserve the respect of any human being, no matter where you are or what condition you are at that particular time in your life. I'm not ashamed to say that some of my relatives had crossed the border and perhaps were found in some of these predicaments, and some of your friends that you may know may have been found in these predicaments. Where we are in our life at a certain time, given our economic status, or searching for jobs, or anything else, we should not look at these people any differently than they are your neighbor today or your council member standing here today as well. These are human beings who deserve the utmost respect and attention from all of us. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for bringing this to our attention, and hopefully the federal government will look at this to make sure that we have some funding available to do something about the vigilantism that is spreading, and also to spread the word that we should provide more awareness about the need to provide human act, humanitarian aid. Oftentimes, these individuals do find themselves in desperate situations where they're trying to cross those deserts. They need our help, not our guns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Uh, Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Zine, Mr. Weiss, and Ms. Hunt.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just for the record, so we understand what we're doing here, the federal government is responsible for the overall issues of our borders, and this provision here provides resources to monitor and respond to groups who advocate vigilantism in any form that subverts, that subverts the democratic process, and also to ensure that there continues to be humane treatment of undocumented persons by holding to the highest standards of human rights and dignity, all law enforcement and judicial processes related to deportation, detention, and immigration status. That's what we're discussing, and that's what we're voting on. Los Angeles basin is the megalopolis and the microcosm of the earth. We are the capital city of the 21st century. This is a local issue, it is a state issue, it is a federal issue, it is a people issue. I'm thrilled that the politics before this last election, where they were going to use undocumented immigrants as another ruse, as another red herring, to divert people's attention from the real issues, did not get the traction that they thought it would get. The fact of the matter is, we have 12 million people here who are living in the shadows of our democracy. They participate in working, they participate in paying taxes, but there is no path to citizenship for them. So inherent in this, as far as I'm concerned, is a path to citizenship for the 12 million undocumented immigrants that are with us here. They're not a threat to our economic well-being. In fact, they're the glue that holds many of us together. So I appreciate all of the civil rights groups, and that's what you are, civil rights, human rights, fighting for the dignity of the individual. And we know when the least of us are hurt, we are all hurt. So we're not going to tolerate, especially in Southern California, and especially in Los Angeles, this kind of behavior. And I say to those folks who consider themselves true Americans with the flag out there, please remember the rights and respect the dignities of everybody, not just the citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Consul General, good to see you again, Amanda, and the folks that are here in chambers. When I hear the word vigilante, as a member of the Los Angeles Police Department for over 30 years, it frightens me to think what vigilantes do. And we know that it's not right, what they do. I am the chairperson of the National Legal Cities Immigration Task Force. We came up with a comprehensive plan, a pathway to legalization. And when we look at individuals who are declared illegal in this country, many of those individuals, millions, entered this country legally, and they're now determined to be illegal because they've overextended their visa, or they dropped out of school, or some other aspect of the process. But what you're doing is for human rights, and I strongly support that. The federal government has responsibility, the local law enforcement has responsibility. People are trained to protect and to serve this country, this city, the Arizona border, the Texas border, whatever the case may be. A Congress passes a, a bill that says build a 700-mile fence, uh, that's not going to solve the problem. What we need to do is tell vigilantes that they're not welcome, that's not part of the American tradition, and we need to stand strong to have the government do their job, have the private sector do their job, and to tell vigilantes that vigilantism is not welcome in the United States of America, whether it be the Latinos, the African-Americans, the Middle Easterns, whatever the, the group may be. A country of immigrants, and that's what we are, a country of immigrants, a nation of immigrants. The strength of diversity is what we rely on, which makes us strong. And we look around the chambers, we look around this horseshoe, and we see diversity. I'm the first, and I'm very proud to say, Middle Eastern, to serve on the City Council in the 225 years of the City of Los Angeles. So from the people from the Middle East, and the people from all over the world that migrate to the United States, we all have an opportunity here in this country that other countries don't provide. And the vigilante mentality wants to stifle that. The vigilante mentality wants to stop it and not permit people to what we have all achieved, the American dream. So Amanda, uh, Consul General, and the other folks involved, I strongly support this measure. I'm glad that Los Angeles has taken the lead on this. It's very important that we do that. Uh, people have a right to have human rights, and we have an obligation to protect human rights and human beings, and vigilantism does not have a place in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Weiss.
Some are, actually. Um, I, I want to thank, um, Mr. Garcetti for putting this motion in, and, uh, I want to thank Amanda Suskin and everybody, uh, who came today for coming together, but particularly you, Amanda, um, because I know, uh, how, you know, how much your heart is in the right place on this issue and on related issues. And I know how hard you work to create coalitions because, um, uh, I think we have a pretty strong Jewish community in Los Angeles, but we're much stronger when we speak, uh, as part of a coalition, and that's just what you've done today. And, uh, my hat is off to you for that. I just want to say one brief, uh, make one brief mention on the substance of the item. Uh, everyone has spoken eloquently about the need to combat discrimination, but let's be very clear, um, in this country, we don't have private enforcement of public criminal laws. We have public law enforcement, and we go down a very dangerous path in this society when for any reason people organize vigilante groups, or posse's, as some call them, Mr. Zine. Uh, it sends a terrible message in this society when we in any way encourage people to take the law into their own hands. And what you're doing here, and what Mr. Garcetti is doing with this motion, is emphasizing that there shall only be and should only be public enforcement of public laws. When private individuals have a grievance in this country, they have a route and a remedy. That's to file a lawsuit. Everyone has the right to do this in this country, but no one should have the right to perform the duties of public law enforcement, uh, and in so doing trample on the civil rights of others. And that's what, uh, that's a very, uh, important message that you are also sending, and I congratulate all of you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I too want to just stand in support of this, um, Declaration of Los Angeles, and thank you, Amanda Suskin, for being here. Amanda, you have been, you're such a star. You're such a star, really. Everything you've ever done and, and every work you've been involved in, you have shown yourself to be, uh, so passionate and so, um, you really are a leader on so many issues. And I know you've wanted to be in elective office, uh, but you know what? You are exactly where you're supposed to be, and this issue is exactly what needs to be brought to the public at this time. And I want to thank you, uh, for having that vision. I want to, uh, always welcome the Consul General, uh, to be here, and we, we know that you have also stood many times with us about civil rights and about dignity and respect. And I, I really appreciate that. And we are the City of Angels, uh, and we, and this is exactly what we should be doing. And no matter what anyone's political philosophy is, uh, there is no argument about everyone having the right to be treated with dignity and respect. And I will tell you, we are also a city of immigrants. There is over 100 languages that is, are, is spoken on a daily basis, uh, in, in this city. I have just, um, created a sister city between Ischia, Italy, uh, and Los Angeles, and, um, the Ischkitani immigrated, uh, many years ago to San Pedro, and I have, uh, more Ischkitani in San Pedro. It's 45,000 Italian-Americans, and they came here brave and courageous, uh, not knowing what they would find, and actually founded the fishing industry, uh, not only, uh, in Los Angeles really, but in California. So we owe a lot to the immigrants that, uh, had bravery and, and courage. I wonder if I would have that kind of courage to leave home and family to come for a better life. We have been involved recently in trying to give our hotel workers, uh, dignity and respect by giving them a decent, decent wage. It is a God-given right that everyone has the right to exist and has the right to be treated with dignity and respect. And as, uh, Councilmember Weiss said, this is really about telling people, you cannot take the law in your own hands, you cannot intimidate, you cannot harass, and we will stand up against you whenever we find that kind of hatred and discrimination in the City of Los Angeles. This is a proud day, and I want to thank all of you for organizing this and coming together and letting us, uh, once again, talk about a message which I think is as relevant today as it was over 2,000 years ago, which is peace on earth, goodwill to men. Everyone has that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Mr. Labanche.
Very much, very good. Good morning, and it is very nice to see so many of you here, and Amanda was so nice, you got a little love from Janice, which is so special. But all of you who've come, and now all please stand, who've come for this issue, please stand and be recognized. Thank you very much. Members, and, uh, to the public listening out there, there's, uh, a lot of things I remember about my family and my mother, but I do remember when she talked to my seven brothers as we all were in an old Ford station wagon, and they said, "Don't be Shannie Irish." Because her, my mother grew up in Lincoln Heights, and she came with a family of 11, and there was a, her father, who was a Los Angeles police officer, you know, that, "Don't be Shannie Irish." There are always somebody who got tagged, and that's no good, because we shouldn't tag anybody, we should love people in such a way. So I remember what my mother says about that, because I think it's real important, and anytime I'd see a multiple family, I think of my mother and God rest her soul in heaven, but the same challenges they have, that people get freaked. But now we have this process, and, Mr. Garcetti, I want to thank you for beginning this. This is the greatest country in the world that we live in, in Los Angeles, and the greatest state in California, and the greatest city. Tragically, I read in news reports that in eastern Los Angeles County, just this last weekend, uh, gentlemen, uh, African-American gentlemen were attacked by four whites who were on the way to west Los Angeles. And they're hate crime, and the DA is going to file hate crime. And that's a horrible situation. It took place right on the border of the county, I think in Claremont, California, which, uh, is, uh, just on the eastern portion. That is terrible education for people to know, to eliminate the fear that they have, uh, when it relates to people who are not different, they just may have a different look. They're all the same, they're all human beings. So I think it's important this time, Mr. Garcetti, that you brought it forward, and as Ms. Hunt said about peace on earth, and many of your other compliment are very good remarks, I just wanted to thank you. And to the Consul General of Mexico, I always welcome you in our City of Los Angeles, as you represent, along with over 100 other consulates in our community, because we are as diverse as one could be next to our very own New York City or Hong Kong, as it relates to the consulates. So it's very important that we continue this declaration, and hopefully other cities will see the importance of it, because we're all people, and if we understand that, and if we put our hands out and if we acknowledge each other, I think that helps an awful lot, and we should all try to do that. I always like to say hi to people. And occasionally, they don't like to say hi back, and I could get my feelings hurt, but then I know, you know, there'll be another day where I could say hi to somebody, and I could make their day and, and welcome them. So, Madam President, I thank you, Mr. Garcetti, I thank you, and let's spread this around the state, because it all starts in cities. Because I know in Oslo, Norway, I believe, just recently, in their city hall, they presented one of the greatest prizes anyone deserves, a Nobel Prize in a city hall. So here we are in a city hall, again, carrying on what will spread to others. Thank you. The greatest country in the world, the greatest state, and the greatest city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labanche. Um, and again, thank you to all of you who are here today to, to support this, um, as well. The item, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, Madam Clerk, is now before us. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, item number 44, which I had actually called a special from yesterday, has the amending motion, um, that has been distributed. If we could take that item now? Uh, colleagues, uh, we have before us item number 44 from yesterday's City Council meeting with an amending motion. Seeing no questions, um, on the board, uh, Madam, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney, do we have a question? No, we're okay.
Madam President, we were just going to clarify for the record, the council file was 062607.
I think that is correct. Um, Madam Clerk, if you could, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Uh, that item has been approved as amended. Next order.
Item 19 was called special by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt?
Okay. Six months. 22 after that. Ms. Hunt. Thank you. Well, I'm, first of all, I'm very pleased to stand up in support of, uh, this item and Mr. Abasi's, um, continuation here. Uh, I've had him a couple times in my committee, and we've discussed his, uh, what he's, he's, you've been there six months, is that right?
Six months.
Six months. Um, what I'd like for you to do is share with the other, uh, council members what you've shared with me, and maybe just in six months, what have you done that you think is, is, uh, helping our whole, uh, convention center and our tourist industry, and maybe what your vision is long-term. Uh, because I will tell you, when I talk to you and I listen to you, I find you to be enthusiastic, passionate, creative, thinking outside of the box in a way that I've really never heard before. And as you know, our convention center has struggled, uh, with bookings, and we're, we've, we've always seemed to not be on the cutting edge of attracting, uh, customers. So I'd like for you to share your passion and your vision with the rest of my colleagues so we have a sense about the future of our convention center.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, again, I'm Puri Abasi, interim general manager of Los Angeles Convention Center. And, uh, what Councilmember Hunt so eloquently put is, um, finding ownership over one of the biggest assets that Los Angeles has. Los Angeles Convention Center is the window of the world. The world, uh, all over looks at Los Angeles Convention Center as the true representation of Los Angeles. Uh, the item that was before you, previously, many of you spoke of the capital of the 21st century. To become the capital of the 21st century and to sustain that position as we move forward, we need to have a world-class convention center, and we need to have a convention center that all of you and all Angelinos, such as myself, are proud to have. To get to that point, we need to have a vision, we need to have a plan, and we need to move aggressively to take advantage of the opportunities that have come before us with the, uh, development establishment of the L.A. Live Project, the coming of the Headquarters Hotel, and many other items that are happening in the South Park, uh, region of Los Angeles.
Before you go on, can I, we have a lot of noise, um, in, in the council chambers. If I could ask everyone to take your conversations outside, uh, if you have conversations, it's very difficult for us to hear the speaker. Shh. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. The vision that we have for Los Angeles Convention Center is a vision that has been articulated time and time again by the mayor of the City of Los Angeles and the council. We need to have a dynamic asset in the convention center, an asset that gives back to the community, We need to have a dynamic asset in Convention Center, an asset that gives back to the community, gives back to the business of the hospitality industry, one of the premier industries in the nation, and one that involves all citizens of Los Angeles in taking advantage of this great asset. When I look as a businessman at the Los Angeles Convention Center, I look at a $3 billion asset. And when I look at that, and I come to you and look at what your expectations are, I see the expectation of this council, the mayor, and the citizens of Los Angeles being that we need to take the most out of this great asset called the Los Angeles Convention Center. We have developed various business initiatives that I've shared with the committee. We have instituted synergies and partnerships with our prime partners, L.A. Inc., the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Port of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles World Airports. I'm sure you're aware of a very new and exciting initiative that was implemented very recently, and that was the remote baggage check and boarding pass program. At the Los Angeles Convention Center, we are one of the few centers in the world that offer delegates and attendees the opportunity to check their baggage in at the end of the convention and get their boarding pass. What that does is obviously makes the center more desirable for attendees to come and have their events there. In addition, it relieves a lot of traffic and other security concerns at LAX. That is an example of the synergies we have been able to develop in a very short period of time. Today, as I sit here before you, I'm happy to report that, again, excitement and energy is all very good, but what are the end results? Today, we are sitting at 40% more in terms of our cash position as compared to last year. We completed fiscal year '05, '06 fiscal year. As a first year, we had an operating surplus. We will continue doing that. The Los Angeles Convention Center is one of the few, if not the only, Convention Centers in the nation that actually has an operating surplus, that actually makes more money than it spends. One very important item that was brought up at the committee meeting was the debt service. The men and women of the Los Angeles Convention Center own the debt service. We understand it, we know that what it is that we need to do, and the way we're trying to address that issue is through the increase of the transient occupancy tax. The more we can increase the transient occupancy tax, in terms of the revenues generated through that revenue source, the less the general fund is burdened to pay for the debt service. As an example, in 2001, 2002 fiscal year, the city's general fund paid close to $22 million to augment the transient occupancy tax for the debt service. Today, we are projecting $5 million in terms of general fund subsidy. And we are committing to see that number go to zero in two years. That is a vision that we are very comfortable in terms of attaining. Again, like I would like to say, I'm here representing the hard-working women and men of Los Angeles Convention Center. We have put our minds together, we have a business and a strategic plan to move forward. We're very excited. Councilmember Hahn, again, we look at it as a great opportunity to be able to represent Los Angeles. As I told you before, I've lived in every part of this city for the past 25 years. I'm a resident, proud resident of Los Angeles. And just being able to be the custodian of that window that I talked about is a magnificent experience for me, and I look forward to many good things.
Let me... I know my colleague, Councilmember Rosendahl, has been working very hard along the Century Boulevard corridor. And besides what we believe is a very important issue of working with the hotel workers, we would also like to help those hotels by studying the idea of building a mini conference center. A lot of people were nervous about proposing that, because for some reason, they thought maybe that would take away from the Convention Center. But I thought you had a very good, balanced perspective of that. Maybe you can share that on what do you think of the idea of us building a mini... Was that your question? Mini conference center along Century Boulevard?
Again, the issue of a conference center or helping the hotels in terms of their business is a very interesting business analysis. And the way we look at it, or our perspective on that, is the more business we can bring into this city, even if that business does not occupy space at the Convention Center, what it ends up doing is going to end up generating transient occupancy tax, which is going to go back to the city's general fund to help pave the streets of this city, pay for the thousand additional cops, and all the other important needs of this city. A model that has been used very successfully by the tech sector is the idea of incubators. Now, incubators are, for us, in our industry, are locations like the hotels, like the conference center, that bring business in. And then, as those businesses succeed, as those events succeed and they start to grow, they have no other place to go but the Convention Center. So by doing that, by supporting that, not only we're helping the hospitality industry, but we are also are in the business of creating business, event business, for our future. And that is very important, to have a long-term vision, not only look at repeat clients, not only look at citywide clients, but look at creating events and helping create events where they would bring business back to the Convention Center.
Thank you. Well, colleagues, I am in great support of what we're doing today. We're giving Mr. Abassi a six-month extension on his contract. And as you can see, in six months, he's come in here with a great plan, a great vision. I appreciate the way he thinks about Los Angeles. I appreciate the way he thinks about the Convention Center, about the possibility of a mini conference center along Century Boulevard. I think that's the kind of person that really we want in this position. And I hope someday you will be the permanent manager there, because I think you're exactly here at the right time in Los Angeles. We are on the cusp of explosion in downtown Los Angeles, as well as the rest of the city. And I like the way you think about all these aspects. You've done a good job caretaking for six months, and you've proven yourself, really, I think, beyond a lot of expectations here. So I'm completely in support of this, and I hope we'll have a unanimous position here today in the council.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Indeed, you haven't been a caretaker, you've been a real doer and a real leader. And I applaud my chair's eloquence on asking you all those questions. But let me just hear a couple lines again. I applauded you when you said in two years, "You intend to be in the black and no longer get a subsidy from the city."
That is correct.
There'd be some confidence that that's a real thing.
It is a real thing. We are currently in the black in terms of our operating budget. What we've taken out this year and within our business plan is the ownership of the bond indebtedness of the Convention Center, and through the increases in the transit occupancy tax revenue generation. And how that is done is our close collaboration with L.A. Inc. to book additional events into the center. I quite frequently, in the past six months, have traveled with them, and we have closed major deals for the city and the center. What that does is increases the TOT level, where 25% of that, which goes to the debt service, would be enough to fulfill the debt service obligations.
How much have we subsidized that complex since day one?
Since day one, we'd run into hundreds of millions of dollars.
Hundreds?
Of millions of dollars.
Of millions of taxpayer money?
Yes.
So it's really been supporting the private sector?
That's right.
So when people complain about us talking about a living wage for people along Century Corridor, we put hundreds of millions of dollars into business ventures to give them the opportunity to actually be successful. Okay, let's talk a little bit more about the Conference Center. One of the issues that was strongly debated and discussed here in the city council was a living wage made sense on the corridor, because we, the city, were taking some leadership initiatives that we feel will strengthen the business opportunities of those hotels and give them greater occupancy and be able to charge higher rates. And on the other side of that, we want a living wage for the workers who do the real work in that area there. Explain to me what the Conference Center is, and also talk about L.A. Inc. and what that is.
Very good. L.A. Inc., the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau, is a nonprofit organization that is contracted with the City of Los Angeles to basically market and brand Los Angeles and bring citywide events to this great city. Citywide events are those events that occupy hotel rooms. So their charge is basically bringing in business into the city to generate and impact the hospitality industry in a positive way. Just as a side note to that, and continuing your comment about bringing hundreds of millions of dollars into the... In support of the private sector, the Los Angeles Convention Center, through its support of events that are hosted at the center, brings in approximately, and this is very conservative figures that I'm sharing with you, a billion dollars of economic impact to this city, generating 11,000 industry-supported jobs. And we had PricewaterhouseCoopers do an audit of the economic impact of the Convention Center, and those were the figures that they came back with. And it's our partnership and synergies with L.A. Inc., and as we look in the future with L.A. Live, as Nokia Theater comes online and helps us bring more business into the city. As far as the Conference Center, again, the item on the Conference Center is having a location within, on Century Boulevard, basically, that is going to bring event and venue hosting capabilities to that center. As you've heard from L.A. Inc., the idea is a great idea, but one thing that we need to make sure we do, we bring all the ancillary support services to that. So when people come to that Conference Center, they have an opportunity to enjoy themselves once they leave that. Exactly the same model we're using with L.A. Convention Center and L.A. Live.
Well, we're looking forward to that development on that. And I certainly resent the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, taking a position about our living wage as being meddling in the private sector. Well, indeed, we involve ourselves in the private sector, like we have hundreds of millions of dollars for the Convention Center, for the multiplier effect of billions of dollars for everybody in it. So we are a business-friendly city when it comes to that. And I also resent the signature gatherings going on right now for ballot measure that are absolutely misrepresenting the truth. But I like the truth I'm hearing from you, and we look forward to you getting a contract for a few years rather than just six months. Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Well, I want to join my colleagues in congratulating and commending you, and also Mr. Hill, who's sitting behind you. The two of you worked very, very hard at the Convention Center, and most recently saw you during the auto show, where 400-some-thousand people visited that facility. I know that when L.A. Live comes online and the hotel comes online, more conventions with L.A. Inc. will be coming to Los Angeles, more activities. I think you've done a great job. How long have you been working at the Convention Center?
Prior to my appointment, six months ago, I was the chief operating officer for a period of five years.
Five years?
Yes.
How about Mr. Hill?
Same period of time.
Five years, okay. So you've got a history there. You know the internal workings, you know how to make it work. And I think it's just on the threshold of major activities with L.A. Live coming online, with what we anticipate, with the new hotel, with more conventions. I know I just came back from a conference with many of my colleagues up in Reno, National League of Cities, where the Convention Center was quite a distance from many of the hotels in Reno. But what we have now is an opportunity to expand it even greater business. You talk about a billion dollars. More conventions, more conventioneers, more activities, more businesses thrive, and it's a benefit to everyone. So I strongly support this. And I don't know when the mayor makes the decision on the permanent general manager, but obviously you've done a great job for the last five years, and I'm sure you'll continue that. And these little leaps, and you make these little leaps, and then you get up to the top spot. So I'm sure Mr. Hill's waiting for you to get to the top spot so he can slide into your spot. So congratulations to you, you got my support.
Appreciate that comment, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, Mr. Labonche.
Thank you very much. How are you doing today?
Very well.
Is there any... You know, I know some people don't like this here, but is there any revenue opportunity for the Convention Center as it relates to signage?
Yes.
That are we... Do you have a plan for that?
Yes, we are working very closely with the Chief Legislative Analyst Office, basically, to identify those opportunities and come up with a model. And we're looking at being able to come up with a sustainable option within the next six months.
And is it going to be tasteful? Because I know there's a great concern in our city of people of how we relate to signage, but I think there's an opportunity there. So you're going to make sure it's tasteful, and maybe have some neighborhood input too on that?
Most certainly. One of the initiatives that we looked at as we proposed six months ago in regards to our business plan was to look at alternative revenue sources, so not only concentrate on the revenues that Convention Center usually generates from the sale of services and space, but to look at other revenue opportunities. One of our greatest assets, Councilman, if I may, is our parking. One of the largest assets in downtown Los Angeles. And again, how do we strategically use that?
How many spaces do you have?
5,600 spaces.
Right.
In an area where parking is going to be a premium asset, as we move forward with the L.A. Live development, those service lots are disappearing. And again, those are the opportunities we have to look at, and those are decisions that I will be coming before this council in the coming months, to look how can we strategically position the Convention Center to take advantage of those assets.
And with the L.A. Live coming, do you have some ideas?
As far as...
You know, for the spread effect of what happens when you have such a generation. In today's paper, they report of, you know, the changing face of Los Angeles and L.A. Live and other issues too. Have you looked at that?
Yes.
Obviously, you've been briefed by L.A. Live, right?
We work hand-in-hand and back-to-back on many projects, just to see what the impact is. Today, we're looking at 40% additional bookings for the future years as compared to last year. That's the impact of L.A. Live. We are looking at close to $2 million in additional revenues for the Los Angeles Convention Center. That is because of the L.A. Live project coming on.
Let me ask a question. They have a very successful, although they missed it, a couple of Saturdays going Pasadena, very successful university down the street from you, and they have these sell-out games at the Coliseum. In the past, there was shuttle service from the Convention Center area. Was... And I don't know if it was this season, did you have shuttle service?
Yes, we did.
You did have shuttle service?
We did have shuttle service.
And you did get a lot of parking during the football games?
Yes, we did.
Good, well, thank you so much.
Again, looking at a business standpoint, what is the asset, and what is the best way to take advantage of it? Again, if the asset is parking, how do we sell that parking? How do we generate additional revenues?
And lastly, how is Gil Lindsay's Plaza there?
It's looking as beautiful and more beautiful than before. We are actually looking at some additional majors in terms of beautification. We are working with the City Office of Beautification to bring in some more components there. Again, it's a great area. We are missing open areas in the downtown, and that is one of the premier ones. So we're looking at making improvements there, not only sustaining the look, but actually making improvements.
Thank you, and it's always nice to see you. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate that, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Labonche. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes, that item's approved. Next item?
Thank you. Item 22 is called special for cards from the public.
Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, my name's Ms. Hawkins. On item number 22, as we establish hearing, dates, and signatures concerning buildings, we must say no on any customer conservation support of any country other than the eight states. Parent signature agreements, any school principal rights.
Madam President, she appears to be off topic.
This is regarding the Assistant General Manager of Environmental Affairs Department.
Okay, we're talking about the inherited land plan to sign for anything after the age of 21 years old.
Ms. Hawkins, this is... Again, we need you to keep on the topic based on the Brown Act. This is the Assistant General Manager position.
No signature for any travel plan. Same condom of any same family members of unknown. This can't work or heal HIV or AIDS or tubalization, any travel plan, sex change operation...
Madam President, her continued discussion of irrelevancies can be deemed to be...
So if you...
Against the rule of decorum.
If you want to talk about the environmental affairs position, otherwise, we'll ask you to sit down.
...dealing with economic or willingness or who own what land. We still cannot go back and complain of who is the owner of the land, which is dealing with... Back to the attorneys. Who going to sign the signature that this is their land? Whether they are dead or alive, whether they come over the line divided line or not. We still got to say who is going to be the signature of the attorney? It's going to be the signature of the...
Hawkins, this is about the salary and benefits for...
Okay, we're still talking about money. Who going to be the one to sign the checks? We got to go back to the city attorney or the attorney of the business. Who is going to be in the head-up? You cannot blame us, they got me.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, this item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Madam President, there was a request to hold item 23 on the desk for an amendment. There is a special one that has been circulated, and I believe the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, no, not Parks.
Excuse me, Mr. Zuma-Dog, please. Mr. Parks has been acknowledged.
I'd like... We issued a motion dealing with special one and requesting that it be a Rule 23, because the city just became... a Rule 23, because the city just became aware as of yesterday that FCC is in the process of creating some guidelines that may negatively impact our telecommunications arena, particularly dealing with our cable TV and the public access. As we know, the state of California recently put in a law that gave us the ability to have somewhere in the neighborhood of 5% of the gross revenue, but 1% for public access. This FCC regulation appears to eliminate that 1%, and that decision could be made momentarily. And it's important that we, as a city, take a position along with a variety of other national organizations, of the National League of Cities Conference of Mayors, and so that is the issue of why special one is on the agenda and why it's significant for us to move forward today, because that decision could be made momentarily.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Vote on the findings. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Basically, as relates to this issue, again, I forgot to mention one other issue. There's a redlining issue that deals with where FCC might also negatively impact, and they have guidelines in there that are contrary to the city's position on redlining, and it's certainly the impact of the 1%. As you know with the state law, this is going to be primarily the city's effort of dealing with public access will be that 1%, roughly about $4.6 million, in which the city can defray that cost. And so in my judgment, and I'd like to make a verbal motion that the council determine pursuant to Government Code Section 54952B2, and pursuant to Rule 23 of the rules of the city council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and the need for action came to the attention of the city council subsequent to posting of the agenda.
Thank you. We have a second on this motion. Mr. Parks' motion. Mr. Rosendahl.
Explain it a little bit more for us.
Mr. Parks, further explanation, please.
As far as the substance of the issue, it's pretty well laid out in the motion, but basically, and this came to our attention through ITGS yesterday, in which city staff advised us that the FCC had a pending regulation that could alter the current process that we're expecting with the new state law, which is AB 2987, in which we get 5% of the gross revenue, but 1% of the additionally of, for public access. The FCC appears to be altering that and may make a ruling that eliminates the 1% from our being able to retrieve it and make it a maximum of 5% of the gross revenue for any cable, or cable access, or for the cities to retrieve revenue. The other issue is redlining, in which the city has guidelines or believes that the current guidelines are in place to protect our residents and particularly the, those who may not be able to afford cable, in which the FCC appears that they may be taking a position in opposition. It's important for our position as a city to go forward on both of those issues, so that if they make a decision between now and the end of this week, that we'd have our position in place. The letter in which we became aware of this came to, the city basically was written December 12, but it came to our attention yesterday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. I will second that, but I would like to, in this discussion, before we vote, Mr. President, has asked the ITA people to come up to the table for some questions.
Yeah, ITA, please come forward, and Mr. Parks, it was a friendly amendment to his own motion, so we really don't need a second, but thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Technical issue, thank you. And if you can explain further the ramifications of this, identify, please. Thank you.
Yes, hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us your name.
Mark Wolf with the Information Technology Agency.
Mark, could you first start off and tell us what happened in Sacramento and what that new law is about, and just give us a quick hit of what they passed and is now in place?
Sure. As a result of Assembly Bill 2987, the state of California is taking over the franchising authority for video services. Currently, through the end of this month, the city has franchising authority over the cable providers in the city of Los Angeles. As a result of the new legislation, there'll be new, new entrants into this market, and as a result, they will be, as of January 1st, they will be under the state's franchise. We'll continue our existing franchises with the current cable incumbents through January 2008. As a result of the legislation, it reduces, currently, we have strong consumer service standards that are in place in the city of Los Angeles. Those will be reduced as a result of the state legislation, will be held to the state and federal guidelines, standards for consumer services, which are weaker than the city of Los Angeles's. We also will not have authority over the actual franchising process. That will be held to the state to administrate, administrate that through the Public Utility Commission. And, and last, as a result of the legislation, also, the PEG current public access model that's in place with our existing franchise agreements, that will continue through January 2009 with our cable, our current cable incumbents, where we have studios throughout the city for public access. Following 2009, January 2009, we'll be having to change our PEG model and utilizing a 1% fee that will be provided through the state franchise, through the state law.
And Mr. Parks's friendly motion here basically takes away, potentially, if we don't get this forward, that 1%?
Yes, as we understand it today, the FCC, the FCC proposed ruling would jeopardize the 1% PEG fee under the Nunez bill, and in that case, the city would absorb the responsibility for public access, losing the 1% fee, which is currently estimated, as Councilman Parks has indicated, at 4.6 million per year. The other, the other issue is that the redlining provisions that are currently in the state law would also be overturned, as we understand it. The ruling is currently in draft form, and as we understand, would be released by December 20th.
First, I think the public needs to know, the folks watching this on Channel 35, that you've just lost the ability of the city of Los Angeles in dealing with customer service issues. Now that the merger of Time Warner has taken place, our phones are ringing off the hook, and there's barely anything the city of Los Angeles can do when it comes to customer service. Would you help me on that point?
Today, as a result, as you've indicated, Councilman, there has been a spike in complaints that we've received from cable subscribers throughout Los Angeles as a result of the Time Warner takeover. The, our, the complaints that we've received have jumped from approximately 200 per month to double to 400 a month. And I think a lot of that is due to the transition from moving from Adelphia Systems over to a unified system with Time Warner. So a certain amount of problems would be expected as a result of that change in the, in the transition. We have been communicating on a weekly basis and on a daily basis, actually, sending the complaints over to Time Warner, and they have, they have been quick to follow up on, on the complaints. But as you've indicated, there is a large, a large quantity that we've been receiving.
Well, the first thing is, the good news about the bill is, is now the phone company can offer real competition to the cable companies. So those who didn't go to the dish or the satellite will truly have options and choices. That's good. The bad news is, there's nobody really regulating the customer service aspects going forward. And the other bad news is, public access as we know it today is almost finished by this new legislation. And I appeal to those people who believe in public access to organize themselves and put proposals before us, so we can continue to have public access. My last comment is, I've been a cable executive, and I've been a fighter for public access. I'm very upset to see us losing the ability to monitor customer complaints and continue to have the kind of public access that is a First Amendment electronic box for, for the public. We're in trouble with that whole concept now that the state has taken away our authority on both levels. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Wolf, any other information on this?
No, that's it.
So we are now going to open the roll?
Madam President, if we could, Mr. Parks, if we could get clarification, was there any amendment to the resolution in its current state?
No, no amendment, just the, basically, the verbal motion to create the Rule 23.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought when you said, Mr. Parks, you made a reference to an amendment to the motion. So we have the 23 before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Madam President, item 23 is still being held on the desk, so that would leave the closed session items.
So we're complete with the open session items?
Until we get the amendment on 23.
Mr. City Attorney?
In pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, a council will be going into closed session on items number 27, 28, and 29.
Attorney, Mr. Clerk, what about my reconsideration of the item that I spoke of?
We're still waiting for the amendment, and it has not been reconsidered as of yet.
What do you want me to do?
We can do that when we come back in open session.
Very well, thank you. Circulate it?
Mr. Parks?
Fourth with on that special one?
Fourth with on the special one. So, Mr. Clerk, we're going to closed session now?
That's correct.
All right. We will go into closed session according to the Government Code, and we will reconvene following the executive session.
We took action on a number of items. We are about to lose quorum. We will probably have to continue item 23 until Friday. Item 29, there are two cards on the other two closed session items. We had public hearings on already, so I'd like to ask our two speakers on 29 to please take it one minute each, and then we will pass the closed session items in open session. Matt Dowd on item 29. Mr. Dowd out in the valley. And then after that, we'll hear from Michael Hunt. Why don't, while we're waiting for that, why don't we announce items 27 and 28, Mr. City Attorney? They're not there? Okay, we'll close the hearings on those on item 29. If we please announce on items 27, 28, and 29, please, actions.
Actually, Madam President, on item 28, there's a recommendation for a stipulated award in the amount of $101,000 in the workers' compensation case entitled Richard Ortiz versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
And on item 29, the city attorney will speak to the recommendations.
And this is a settlement involving Los Angeles Export Terminal. The city will pay $27.7 million. LAXT and Oxbow entities will provide 24 management, full-time, union-affiliated employees of the terminal operators on premises with a retraining stipend worth $1.8 million. LAXT will vacate and surrender all 117 acres of the premises. Permit 688 issued by the city will terminate when LAXT vacates. City waives claims for past due rent. City will receive insurance and indemnities backed by the parent Oxbow entity. And LAXD and the Oxbow entities will perform a limited environmental remediation of the premises.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Point of clarification from the city attorney. Can you please clarify, for the record, this $27.7 million and all of the dollars delineated in your explanation there, are any of that general fund money, or is that all relative to the port budget, which is separate from the general fund?
It's separate from the general fund. It's port money.
Thank you. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And that leaves us with 23. Hold on one moment, if Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, for one minute, if you'll speak on 23, and then we are done. Fourth with, if there's no objection on that. Please go ahead. On item 23, Ms. Hawkins.
Okay, again, my name's Ms. Hawkins. As we begin to change United States of America gender and borderline laws of enforcement to new city official laws, we must be of understanding of all 58 states of public people, of whom is ruling this new agenda laws, and not all countries and local government in all 114 countries, plus in 12 states in United States and a state in three states are not.
We're off topic of the ethics law revision here, but we want to thank you for your comments. It had to be about ethics revision. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. The ethics revision. So that'll close our public comment on 23. Thank you. And we'll get you the information on that, don't worry. We have that as amended, so let's open the roll as amended on 23, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Yeah. We'll make sure you get that information, don't worry. Okay, now it is the, the end of our agenda, and any announcements, colleagues? Yes?
98A is continued to Friday, or what do you want me to put back on? 98A?
Oh, 96A.
96A?
I think we can, we can work on a motion for how it's spent in the general fund together, I think is the best way, because we were just informed we can't reconsider before, but if that's all right with you.
Say it again.
We can work on a motion together on, on how the general fund money will be spent, but we, if we reconsider it today and just send it to one committee, because a number of different council members had inquired about it, I think it's best for us to work on as a proactive motion, put it in the general fund, and then we'll work on how to spend it in the general fund.
Sure, because it could get lost in the general fund.
Absolutely. You got it.
So pull my, my motion that Bob worked so hard on out.
You got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Avash. Yes. Okay. Announcements? One announcement I'd like to make is that Dennis Zine, our fearless council member from San Fernando Valley, Third District, was elected to the National League of Cities National Board, which is a great accomplishment. Congratulations, Mr. Zine, it's something that will help bring attention and resources to Los Angeles. It was a unanimous vote.
Voice vote.
For Mr. ... Okay. And congratulations, Mr. Zine, on that. Other announcements, Mr. Parks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have a WorkSource Winter Job Fair in the Eighth District, December the 15th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Crenshaw WorkSource Center, 3965 Vermont. There's a couple of dozen different employers in attendance, and we hope the community participate. Also, the Greater Los Angeles African American Chamber is having its holiday function on Thursday, December 14th, 6:00 PM to 8:30. And that's, the next one would be the, Eighth District is sponsoring a Fourth Annual Winter Wonderland in Lemur Park, December the 16th, Saturday, at the park at Crenshaw and 43rd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Other announcements? Do you have an announcement? Adjourned motions? We have some. Can I ask everybody, please to rise. Recognize Mr. Cardenas.
Great sadness that I bring forth this adjourned motion, seconded by Councilmember Garcetti. Marshall Ralph Diaz passed away on December 1st, 2006, at the age of 62, from heart failure at a hospital in Reno, Nevada. Marshall was born in Bakersfield, California. In the early 1970s, he moved to the San Fernando Valley. He was inspired by the farmworker movement. Marshall threw himself into activism. In the early 1980s, he worked to increase the number of Latinos hired for civil service jobs in California and engaged, engaged in battles, battle after battle, over maps that defined voting districts. His goal was to have maps redrawn in a way that solidified Latino voting power and increased the likelihood that Latinos and Latinas be elected to office. Marshall was a resident of Echo Park and was active in several community-based organizations such as El Proyecto del Barrio Inc. and El Centro de Pueblo, also located in Echo Park, where he served as chairman of the board of directors. He is survived by his mother, one brother, a sister, and two sons, Marshall Jr. and Amade. I personally knew Marshall since I was about seven years old. He used to come over my house, and he dated one of my sisters. He didn't need glasses back then. The girls in the family got all the looks. And so he used to come over, and back in the old-fashioned days, my father used to send me with them on dates to be their little chaperone. And I tell you that story, not because it's cute, but because I think it's very telling of what it was like to hang around with Marshall. There I was as a little boy, and him in the driver's seat of a car, taking me... There I was as a little boy, and him in the driver's seat of a car, taking me here and there. Yet, as an adult, I can honestly say, I got elected to the state legislature because Marshall Diaz worked on redistricting to make sure that there were fair opportunities for people like me to get elected. There I was, as an adult, not realizing that this guy that I met when I was a little boy influenced my life and has really launched, helped launch me on a career that I'm so proud of. So, with that, again, I adjourn in the memory of Marshall Ralph Diaz, and also seconded by Eric Garcetti. Marshall was a constituent of, of Councilmember Garcetti's. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And Mr. Diaz is mourned in Echo Park, and the work that he did at El Centro de Pueblo in the heart of Echo Park was extraordinary work, and I had the good fortune of interacting with him and meeting him and seeing some of those qualities that you described, Mr. Cardenas, so thank you for doing that. Mr. Labange?
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, thank you. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Richard Dick Leo Flock, who was very involved with the scouting movement here in Los Angeles. He has been involved for many, many years, and over the years, he helped create over 147 young men to earn the Eagle Scout Award. He is survived by his daughter Lori and his brother Harold. I request we adjourn in memory of Dick Flock.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I want to adjourn in memory of a very special individual, who was not just a city employee, not just an LAPD officer, because he was all those things, but he was just a really decent human being, and his name was Terry Kamik from Central Division, Los Angeles Police Department. He died yesterday after a long battle with cancer. He was 60 years old, and he served 36 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, most of which was at Central Division. And I knew him personally, and when he knew that he was in the greatest challenge of his life, I remember we were out for a walk down Main Street, just reaching out to people who were homeless, and he said he was happy, and he said he loved what he did. And while he had the disease, and he was still going to fight it, he was just happy to be able to get up and come to work every day and get out there and continue to help people. He had a deep and unyielding faith in God, and I'm sure that that's what carried him for as long as he was able to serve all of us. And so, I want to make sure that we remember people like that, as we're all public servants as well. He was very, very special. And he is survived by his wife of 40 years, Sandy, two sons, Kyle and Alan, and they were at his bedside when he passed. Funeral services are pending, and I know many of us who worked with him, the folks down at California Hospital, many of the stakeholders in South Park, remember him with the greatest of memories, and I'm sure we'll all be there, and once I get the arrangements, I'll be happy to share it on Channel 35 so that people will know. Okay? Mr. Cardenas wants a second.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, second. Yes, Ms. Labange?
I wanted to assert it, but just to say, he was truly a Los Angeles police officer and the kindest of persons, as you say, working central, knowing the community all the years, always extremely friendly and a leader. And I'm so sorry, just yesterday, I learned of his challenge of slipping into a coma and then of your news, Jan, that he had passed. Terry was a wonderful, wonderful representative of the Los Angeles Police Department. He'll be sorely missed.
Lastly, colleagues, thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Lastly, colleagues, I ask we adjourn in memory of Gilbert Fernandez, who also was connected with El Centro de Pueblo, an organization that is mourning doubly right now, an incredible neighborhood activist who worked with Marshall Diaz and somebody who improved not only Echo Park, but the entire Los Angeles. He passed away on November 25th as a result of a blood clot in his brain. He had been employed by El Centro de Pueblo since 1988 as an AIDS educator and behavior chain specialist, but throughout his employment at El Centro, his focus was on educating substance users and high-risk clients on the issue of HIV infection. He provided substance abuse counseling and referral treatment for clients attempting to change their substance-using behavior. But as a longtime employee of El Centro, Gilbert was much more participating in so many community events to assist in educating the community residents, improve the conditions in which they live. He touched young people, he touched seniors, he touched people of all ages throughout Echo Park. His commitment and dedication to his clients will not be forgotten and serve as an example to service providers in the future. He's survived by his two daughters, and we will really miss Gilbert in Echo Park. May he rest in peace, and our sympathies are with his family. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. We will next be in session on Friday, December 15th. We will begin at 9:00 a.m. for our presentation, since it's the last Friday before our council recess. Have a great afternoon. We'll see you then.[1768.33][1768.33][music]